This is the Lakeville Select Board enacting as a wage and personnel board as needed on November 22 at 5:30 PM. Please ask if any of us recording the meeting and announce that cable is taking the meeting. First thing on the agenda is the Select Board announcements. The Lakeville Arts Council invites the public to shop at the Holiday Craft Event that will take place on December 2nd from 5 to 8, and December 3rd from 10 AM to 3 PM at Lupe Barn Lodge located at Ted Williams Camp. All Look Glitters is a holiday shopping event where you can shop local and find one-of-a-kind, unique gifts from talented crafters. Lake Gorman will be providing musical entertainment on December 2nd and Baylor - Baylor - Zakowski?
Zakowski.
Thank you. Will entertain on December 3rd. For additional information, visit their website at lakevilleartscouncilma.org or on Facebook at Lakeville Arts Council MA. On December 3rd, December 4th, from 10 AM to 3 PM, the Friends of the Library - excuse me, the Friends of the Lakeville Council on Aging will be offering handmade holiday wreaths, kiss balls, ornaments, centerpieces, and baskets for sale. The event will take place in the Lakeville Landing at 350 Pembroke Street next to the Fire Station Town Hall. The Lakeville Lions will be hosting a tree lighting and caroling event on December 3rd at 6 PM at the Lakeville Lions Clubhouse located at 170 Main Street. They're collecting unwrapped toys for Toys for Tots and food items for the Sacred Heart Food Pantry. Santa will be making an appearance and reference will be offered.
Mr. Chairman, I have something I'd like to just share if I can. Yesterday, we - I participated with some of the school officials through a walk-through.
It's not on the agenda to discuss. Sorry.
It was just an update I wanted to provide.
Well, there's a lot of issues with that, so I don't think it's appropriate to update it.
Okay.
Maybe you become chairman, you can do it. Next, is it town administrative announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for not being able to be there tonight. We've made substantial progress on the lease for the Front Street Cell Tower. As you'll recall, this lease lapsed several years ago. I made renewal a priority given the relatively modest revenue provided under the prior lease. The new lease will include significant one-time payments well in excess of the total payments provided under the previous lease. Last week, Frank Moniz and I met with Environmental Partners to kick off the Bridge Street Traffic Study. This project, which is being funded by an earmark in the state budget, is being represented and moving forward on design for the intersection. Funding for design, of course, is still to be found - identified. I am disappointed that I do not have more to report regarding our art buy application with Plymouth County. I did not receive a direct response to my invitation on behalf of the Select Board to meet with the county treasurer and chair of the county commission, and was told instead that there is an internal meeting scheduled for tomorrow to discuss our application. At this point, the challenges being presented by the county are impacting our ability to designate funding to advance other projects. I'd like to express my appreciation to the staff and elected officials that allowed last week's town meeting to complete its business, taking into consideration of 26 articles, a number of which generated substantial discussion in a single night, a testament to our organization's operational efficiency. And finally, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. The next regular meeting of the Select Board will be on December 5th at 6 PM at the Lakeville Police Station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. So next on the agenda is number three is reorganization of the Select Board. I have personally decided that for my personal - I just - I don't want to serve as the chairman of the Select Board anymore. So I will entertain a motion for an appointment of the - a new chairperson for the board. Well, that's interesting. Nobody wants to be the chair. Well, okay. So I have stepped down as the chair. I will not run this meeting, and it's up to the vice chair to run the meeting. So when you two decide when you want to have a chair, let me know. Yes?
I want to hear about the schools, the school safety.
It's not on the agenda. Okay? And for one board member to comment on something that we don't have all the information on is not appropriate.
Oh, I was just going to provide an update, but as far as the chairmanship, Rich, you and I clearly don't agree on everything, but I think that you as the chair, you provide a lot of value, a tremendous amount of value to what you do and the information that you have from your experience, and I would like to see that you maintain the chair at least through the end of your term.
I don't want to. I don't want to be the chair. I'm sorry. So, vice chair, you are in charge of the meeting.
So you're leaving the meeting too?
I'm leaving because I can't be the chair, okay? So I can't run this meeting.
Oh, that's right.
So you are in charge.
I can only run the meeting if you're not here.
That's correct.
Agenda item number four, discuss and vote to appoint a Select Board member to the Regional Finance Committee. So currently, I believe that's Rich's position. You know, Maureen, if you want to table that position, or if you want to let me know what you want to do with that, because I'm not quite sure why Rich doesn't want to be - I know he's very frustrated. I know that, you know, he feels like it's - whatever. I have a lot of his frustrations too, because the information that we're trying to give people isn't necessarily wrong or false, and folks are just resistant to hearing it. So, you know, I don't know what to do, but you let me know what you want to do with this next one, because I don't have time right now in my personal schedule to be on the Regional Finance Committee. Ari, do you attend these meetings, the Regional Finance Committees? Would you - I mean, if you're already attending, is that something you could represent the board?
I think we're supposed to have a representative. Did you hear us, Ari?
I'm sorry, froze up on me. I said, yes, I attend them.
Oh, okay. Well, if we have to have somebody designated, I'd be happy to do it.
It is not - I don't want to understate it, but it's not a heavy lift. Last year, there didn't meet at all. This year, I'd imagine there'll be a couple of meetings.
Yeah, I did it. I did it for a short amount of time. I mean, I just can't do that one and feel like I'm doing a good job, but I can always put it on the next agenda if I'm acting vice chair. So if I'm vice chair and acting chair doing the agenda, I can put it on another agenda.
It's up to you. I'm happy to attend those meetings and represent the board.
Okay. I make a motion that I step down as vice chair, make a motion that we appoint Selectman Carbone to the Regional Finance Committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to be doing this tonight.
It's all right. Take a breath.
Yep. Uh, let's see. Discuss and vote to appoint a Select Board member to the Capital Expenditures Committee. That's one that I'm more familiar with, Maureen.
That's fine. I'll nominate Leah Fabian to represent the Select Board on the Capital Expenditures Committee.
Step down as vice chair in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, that'll also only be a meeting or two. We'll be done now.
Yep. What time is it? 5:39. So too early to do our hearing. So we're going to skip to - Ari, how long will number seven take? Long?
No.
All right, so let's do number seven.
You should go get them. You can look over at Todd. I think we can get it done within 20 minutes. Todd, what do you think? Is he nodding?
20 minutes? Okay. Well, I was actually going to jump to the other things.
I think we can come pretty fast.
Okay, all right, let's do that then. Agenda item number seven.
I'm going to share my - Jose, can I share my screens when you come up? Can you pull up the PowerPoint?
Yes, you can.
All righty, here we go.
Todd, can you come up to the presenter's table, please?
I think it's that one over there.
Sure.
Okay, does everybody have the slideshow up on the screen?
Yep. The only one that can't see it is Tracy, but it's okay.
Technology's an amazing thing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so here tonight to do a couple of things with this. First is that, as you recall, the article that was approved last week's town meeting, the board now sets every year an annual budget calendar. So that's the action that we're going to need out of this meeting tonight. Other than that, we're providing some general perspective on the overall outlook and some of the things that we're thinking as far as guidance goes. Our budget kickoff with the department heads is scheduled for the next week, so, okay. So I'm going to go through a number of quick slides here to give you a sense of what we're seeing out there. Some of these are, you know, start some economic perspective and then try to build from there. This is a look at the number of home sales that we've seen over the past number of years. 2020 was very high. 2021 was still quite high, although below 2019. Oh, and by the way, I'm sorry, for so far this year, the number for '22 is down about 11 - about 21% in terms of volume from 2021 to date. The median sale price has hit a record in 2021, it was close to $440,000, and that's still going through September of 2022. We're up by another 11% over the sale price of '21. Number of employed residents is recovered back to about the 2017 level. The 2022 looks better than 2021. I'm going to go to the next slide for a moment here and show you the unemployment rate. The unemployment rate '21 was 5.3%. The current unemployment rate is down to 3%. So we're getting close to where we were before the pandemic. This is a quick look at revenue versus expenditures. The left chart's very informative, I think. The town has done a very good job over a long historical period of being very conservative on its revenue estimates, which is important, because what that does, that guarantees a situation where you'll end up with fund balance at the end of the year, a good fund balance situation, and free cash numbers, and generally have the flexibility you need to manage your finances. So the town has traditionally underestimated local receipts to be able to accomplish that, which we do quite deliberately. The year-over-year, education aid's gone up faster than anything else, I think we all know that. Operating expenditures do climb some and fix costs as well. Feel free to jump in at any point, by the way. New growth, the 2023 number is an estimate. Well, we just heard the state certified. I'm sure this number changed or not. I don't think it did. So the new growth for 2023 is still quite high, it's the second highest we've had since 2012, but it is lower than last year's. Now, you could argue that last year's was just such a gangbuster number, we weren't going to be able to sustain it anyway. It's a lot in new growth. So $522,000 is still quite good for a town our size. Some of the issues that are under consideration when it comes to budget, we have three CVAs up for negotiation this year. Those negotiations are active and underway. We're making pretty good progress, we think. Non-union, we will have a - I'm sorry, for the CBAs, there's going to be a contingency in the numbers you'll see. Four settlement doesn't represent anything in particular other than a nut that we're trying to keep the overall settlement amount low. The non-union, we're estimating 3% for full and part-time staff. That would cost $87,000, $88,000, $722,000. Plymouth County pension assessment, we're estimating $150,000. That's not exactly per the actual report. The actual report has a higher number for '24 and a very low number for '25. The county has agreed to come back and smooth out those numbers, so we think the number will be around $150,000. Health insurance costs are estimated about 8% higher. That could be low, that could be high. We don't know where we're going to be on health insurance, it's still very early to tell, but we think that's a reasonable estimate at this point, budget to budget, to go forward. One of the emphasis that we'll have this year, knowing that sort of the - sorry, uncertainty to the economy and some of the issues that we're facing, as well as some of the driving factors, inflation and things like that, we're really going to focus on accommodating increased costs and maintaining the levels of service as opposed to doing anything new. Doesn't mean there won't be anything new, but it's not going to - it will be a different budget than you saw last year. Two of education, the regional district assessments have historically outpaced levy growth. That's a fairly obvious statement. We're going to be meeting with the school district next month to kind of get a sense of where they're going and talk about calendar, and we'll see where we go from there. Local receipts, this is kind of what I was talking about. In FY '23, the budget is $3.9 million. The FY '22 actual was $4.7 million in local receipts. We are very conservative on that number, and that's on purpose, for reasons that you'll see in a moment. Snur removal is budgeted at $135,000. The increase is a little bit in '23. That's still below the five-year average. We don't anticipate increasing it next year, but we will, you know, if there's a significant winner, then we'll have to make some adjustments. Transfers. State aid, we're very well on the cherry sheets in FY '23. That increase, our allocation increased by almost $240,000. That was due almost entirely to an increase in the town's smart growth school reimbursement. As you'll recall, the town had not been receiving the full reimburseings, which was entitled, because the filings with the state corrected that last year, and we ended up with a much higher number for our smart reimbursement. Here's a look at free cash. In FY '23, free cash is about $2.1 million. That is below FY '22, but still very good, second highest we've had since 2014. If we can maintain that level of free cash or something in that neighborhood, it gives us the flexibility we need to be able to meet our policy obligations through the stabilization fund and NOPEP, as well as, you know, fund the capital program in the - through cash, which is what we typically try to do. So the FY '23 free cash allocations, $2.1 million. We already set aside $261,000 of that by virtue of the fall town meeting last week. That was for - does for three things. It was the schematic design for the fire station, there was supplemental funding for police equipment, and then there was money for unpaid bills, required bills. Stabilization, the Select Board's policy targets 10% of general fund operating revenue. Current balance is $3.1 million. Using that policy should be $3.3 million, so about $250,000 increase. OPEB would be at $310,000 for the trust contribution schedule. So if you put the $310,000 together, $250,000, and $261,000, you come up with about $700,000, $800,000. So $800,000 of the $2.1 million right now is accounted for, and the rest would be available for the capital program or for other uses. The budget calendar we put together would have department submissions due on January 6th for the capital program. The recommended plan would then go to the Capital Expenditures Committee, Select Board and the Finance Committee, the process that we normally have. We would always recommend retaining a portion of free cash for unanticipated expenditures such as snur removal or something else. It also helps your general fund situation if you don't need all your free cash. Here's a very vague look at the budget calendar, kind of a bird's eye view. I'm going to give you a more detailed one in a moment. The preliminary revenue budget will be completed after the government's budgets presented in late January. The Select Board and Finance Committee will receive the proposed budget in mid-February, and then reviews will take place in March. And the education budget will be approved by the school committees in March. The Capital Expenditures Committee will review the capital plan. We'll finalize the recommended budget in April. The warrants will be published in April, and town meeting will be in May. So that's a general look at what we're looking at. I'll be happy to take any questions you have on this, and then I can go to the calendar. Anybody?
Anybody? Yep.
Looks good. Todd, anything to add on this?
No. Okay. Thank you, Ari.
Let me go to the calendar. Can I give you a moment to stop sharing and share? All right, here we go. Okay. Okay. Everyone should see the budget calendar now. So this budget calendar is - the budget calendar we wanted by virtue of the - by virtue of the article that was passed last week's town meeting, which allowed us to present the budget after January 31st, which will in turn provide a much more informative budget to the board and the town when it comes to incorporating things like, you know, state revenue estimates as well as the school divisions, the school district's estimates and so on. So we're right here at November 22nd, representing just budget guides and objectives. The budget kickoff for departments will be on November 30th. Tax classification hearing is coming up at the next meeting, December 5th. On January 6th is our internal deadline for operating capital submissions from the departments. In January, presumably the third week or so, if the Healy administration falls asleep and approaches the Baker administration, the governor's budget will come out and we'll have an idea of revenue. We're looking at February 13th for presenting the preliminary FY '24 budget, I should say '24, not '23. And then early to mid-March will be the budget reviews with Select Board. You'll notice those are a little bit later than they were before because of the change in schedule. And the Capital Expenditures Committee will review the capital plan, and education budgets will be approved by the districts. Town meeting warrant closes in March. Finalize the recommended plan in April, and then everything we publish in April, and we'll go to town meeting. So per the - per the new bylaw, the board would need to approve this calendar so we can move forward. So I'll take any questions you have on that.
Make a motion? I'm sorry, did you want a motion? I was just going to ask a question, Ari, on the - I know I've said this to you privately, I've said it to the assessors too, but December 5th for the tax classification hearing. I'm really, really hoping that the assessors will come prepared with an explanation to why it is we just can't charge certain things more, just because we may want to. So they usually come in with a quick little thing, but I think with everything that's happened this year, we should really give folks a really good explanation.
So I'll be happy to emphasize our point with Mr. Oliver, and it's on the -
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Maureen? Anything? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this calendar.
So moved.
Step down in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, the only other item is the preliminary budget outlook. Todd's going to present that, and I'll bring it up on the screen for you.
Okay.
So this is a single sheet handout that you should have in your packets, entitled preliminary outlook.
No.
Oh. We didn't give it to them ahead of time, Todd.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't know that. So as you know, our operating budget relies primarily on three sources of revenue to support the recurring expenses in operation of the town, primarily property taxes, state aid, and what we refer to as local receipts, which are things like motor vehicle excise, building permits, departmental fees, investment earnings, and other types of departmental revenue. So at this time, typically, we have a firm number for the 2.5%. This is based on the estimated new growth the assessors have given us. So we're looking at about $677,000 of new tax revenue based on 2.5%. That may change slightly depending on the final new growth number, but not materially. We're based on the current climate and the building permit activity and the slowdown we've seen in construction, we're conservatively estimating a lower new growth than you've seen in the last few years. So at this point, we're starting at $350,000. As Ari pointed out, a year ago, it was $625,000, I think, and this year was estimated to be over $500,000. So there may be some upside, we'll see how conditions continue through the year. State aid, as Ari mentioned, we had the benefit of an adjustment with the smart growth line, which helped the town this year. We anticipate modest increases next year. Again, the Lions' share of state aid related to Chapter 70 for education aid will be - is directly paid to the regional school districts. It's not in our cherry sheet, our state aid. So that we'll be very keen on, and this is part of why we asked the board to look at modifying the calendar a bit so we can be better aligned with the school educational budget requests. Local receipts, we're looking at a modest increase in a handful of lines. This number for '24 would still be below the '22 actuals, so we're still taking what we believe is a fairly conservative approach at this juncture. And so there's about $1.4 million of additional revenue available. Much of this is sort of dovetailing on what Ari already spoke about. In terms of staffing, again, we're just primarily advocating to maintain current levels of service and staffing. We do have a position that was funded by town meeting last week for a facilities manager. That was a partial year salary, not the full year, because we're already partway into FY ' '23, so there is a balance of the salary to cover. We have - all of our collective bargaining agreements are up for - to be renegotiated for July 1st, 2023. So we've provided a contingency placeholder for that and also a placeholder for cost of living adjustment for non-union staff, both full and part-time. As Ari mentioned, the group insurance, right now, the health escalator, we've been told, is around 8%, and that will then be modified based on the experience of our group. So we're hopeful that that's a good number, but that number could possibly rise or fall a little bit. The Plymouth County actuarial report has come out, and that's done every two years. And as Ari mentioned, we had sticker shock at the FY '24 number. The initial number was about a $320,000 - I apologize - $250,000 increase. So we've, as a group, the Plymouth County communities have asked the county to look at smoothing the impact, because everyone had a very modest second-year increase, so we've asked them to look at spreading that increase over the two years and not hitting us all on the front end, if you will. So we've sort of calculated where that might fall, and it's about $150,000 increase. We think they'll be amenable to - they have a meeting scheduled for mid-December to formally revisit this, so we'll know more in a few weeks. Our general property and liability insurance lines look pretty good, so we're only anticipating a modest adjustment there, $15,000. We've put in some preliminary placeholder numbers for the increases in the educational requests. As Ari said, we haven't had any meetings yet with those administrations to see where they're at. they're at. I can tell you that this year, our, um, Freetown-Lakeville budget is a little higher than the actual assessments are. However, we've, uh, got some potential expenses with the agricultural schools, so we may be asking town meeting in the spring to transfer from one appropriation to the other to, to balance off the year. Um, so again, uh, it's 680,000, it may be allocated, um, in a variety of ways based on student enrollment and, and what the budgetary needs are, uh, for both our region and, and the Voc Tech and, and Agricultural High School. Um, and lastly, that leaves us about 121,000. Um, and again, as Ari said, mentioned, uh, we don't feel we're in a position, given the way the economy is and, and the slowdown in growth, to be advocating for expansion or additional services. We're really just hoping to, um, maintain what we have. Uh, so we're, we're, um, anticipating, uh, we already have experienced, uh, increases in fuel costs, as you know, and the utilities, particularly electric, um, we're seeing, um, increases in, in costs for those, those services. So we've got a placeholder townwide of $100,000 to basically just cover the escalation that we're experiencing in those types of costs. And also, not on the page, we, we have two enterprise funds, as you know, the park and the transfer station, both, uh, but the park in particular has rebounded well after the pandemic. It was a tough couple of years that we had to work through, um, but their operational revenue is, is improved and the transfer station is doing well to date. So we don't anticipate any need for major subsidies, uh, like we've had to do in, in recent years. Uh, so that's some good news. And then, of course, we'll be folding in, um, in addition to the budget and capital plan, we'll have a budget for the community preservation committee, uh, as well as the projects they may be bringing forward to town meeting in the spring. Um, so that's sort of a quick, high-level overview. I'm ha- happy to take any questions or comments.
Okay. Any questions, Lauren?
No, not at this time. Thank you, Todd.
No, thank you. It's nice to know what we're looking at ahead of it, ahead of, you know, the actual budget, so. Thank you, Todd.
My pleasure.
Anything else, Ari, before I move on? Cause it is 6:01.
Exactly 20 minutes, ma'am, Chair. Did it.
All right, so, um, it is now 6:01 and we have a public hearing. Request for new general on-premises all alcoholic beverage license, 348 Bedford Street, Red Hand Brewing Company Incorporated. Um, those of you speaking, if you'd like to, you're the only one speaking?
Uh, I think we'll have a couple more.
Okay, so anyone who, by Todd, anyone who, um, speaks, if you can just give us your name?
Sure.
For the record, um, and what your affiliation is, that would be great.
Absolutely.
So I, I just am a little rusty doing hearings, so I'm just gonna ask Tracy to make sure I do this, okay? And, uh, the first thing we're gonna do is read, um, the hearing notice. Okay. Pursuant to chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Lakeville Select Board acting as the local licensing authority will conduct a public hearing at 6:15 PM on Monday, November 21st, 2022, on the application of Red Hand Brewing Company Incorporated, doing business as Red Hand Brewing, for a new general on-premises all alcoholic beverages license for the property located at 348 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Said hearing will be held at the Lakeville Police Station, 328 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Hold on. This says 6:15.
Yep. It says, and our agenda says six.
And the agenda says six.
Yeah.
So you can continue reading it and then you can, then you can continue it till 6:15.
Okay. Um, said hearing will be held at the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Richard McCamara, Chairman of Igeleia Fabium, Lorraine Carboni, Lakeville Select Board. So... Vice, yes.
The issue was, um, originally the meeting is scheduled for Monday at 6:15, so the legal ad went in, um, and I was unable to re-advertize. So, um, I have talked to the ABCC about this issue and I have it straightened out with them.
Okay, but any, uh, butter notices or anything would have...
Butter notification is all complete, so, um, they were all either spoken to by telephone or emailed on, as far as, um, 350 Bedford, they were sent a letter overnight, so they have all been notified of the change of date and time.
Okay, um, just...
...for, the city of Taunton.
Yep.
The city of New Bedford.
Yep.
The town of Lakeville.
Yep.
And the owner of the property.
Okay. Um, just to be sure, I'm gonna wait till 6:15, cause that was the notice, so. I don't think that has to be a motion, does it?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, moving along. So gentlemen, sorry about that. Um, we're just gonna wait till 6:15, I just wanna, I know everyone was notified, but if someone walks in at 6:15 and they don't have the opportunity to speak, um, I don't wanna deal with that. Um, okay, so agenda item number eight, discuss impossible vote to, for additional time and vehicle allowance for facilities managers. So, um, I do believe that John Biorella, who's our human resource manager, is here and Ari, and he can give us a little bit of information.
Johnny, want to take it or do you want me to?
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Um, so, um, is, um, Mr. Nee in the room?
Yep.
Is this okay? Hi, Paul?
I do, Ari.
So, um, we've had a, um, somewhat lengthy recruitment process for this position, um, which has, uh, been due to the, um, to the fact that we've had a lot of applications and not a lot of qualified applications. As you recall, the board inserted CSL license as one of the, the minimum qualifications and that severely limited our, our pool. So we had 216 applications, four met the minimum calls. Unfortunately, Mr. Nee applied, he's well-known to many in the community. Um, there were several rounds of interviews held over the summer and fall. The, um, uh, the interview panel consisted of, um, of Nick Darling, John Biorella and myself, and we unanimously recommended the Paul Nee, uh, for the position. So Paul's currently self-employed, but he has a very impressive background in facilities, maintenance and repair. He's agreed to accept the starting salary of 78,000, as you recall, advertised at 70 plus or minus, 75 plus or minus, I'm sorry. Um, while the hiring of the, um, position, um, does not require a select board approval, um, I'm requesting that the board approve provision of three weeks vacation, which Mr. Nee has requested, um, in reference to his long tenure, uh, in the industry, and a, uh, vehicle allowance of $300, which is consistent with the other facility staff as well as, uh, Mr. Darling. So, um, I'll be, uh, I'd appreciate if the board would consider that, um, Paul would be a good addition to our team.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, Lorraine? Any discussion? No, I think everything is included here. Okay. Um, so I will entertain a motion to, um, allow for the additional vacation time and vehicle allowance for the facilities manager. So moved. I'll step down, um, as Vice, Vice Chair and Second, and I'd just like to note that, um, other facilities folks do get, um, these, this reimbursement and the equivalent, so...
The really expected amount of chair to be available all the time.
Right, right. Emergencies happen on the weekend, sorry, Paul. But, uh, anyways, okay, any other discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
Welcome aboard, Paul.
Welcome, nice to have you. Nice to have you. Okay, uh, 6:07. Moving on, agenda item number nine. This is, uh, a notice from the town administrator requesting the interim council on aging director be appointed as council on aging director with no interim next to her name anymore. Um, so we had, back in the spring, when our council on aging director had left us, we decided that, um, would, you know, give Laurie the opportunity to, um, sit in the chair for a lot of reasons. One was to see if she liked the job, one was to see if, you know, she was, um, a good fit for the town, which doesn't surprise me at all, because at the COA luncheon today, I couldn't possibly have heard any more, you know, great, um, nice things about you, so I, I'm really pleased to, to see this. Um, so, anything from you, Lorraine, on this?
Everything is in here, it, it looks like the position was posted internally as required. Um, oh, and it, we have a list here of, of the accomplishments.
Yep.
That Laurie has done this year, it's pretty extensive.
Big page. All right, so I will entertain a motion that we appoint Laurie Fahey as council on aging director.
So moved.
I'll step down in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Yay! Oh, it's, it's a tough crowd you have sometimes, Laurie, but they love you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It's really nice. Um, all right, next, let me see what time, 6:10. Uh, agenda item number 10, uh, discuss impossible vote to approve request from Department of Public Works Director to rehire Charles Enrique as emergency snow and ice worker at grade six, step five. Anything we need to know on this from John or... He's...
Talk for a second, Ari.
Yep.
Charles, he was on board with us last year, he did a fine job, you know, he's looking to return. We do have, um, some competitive issues in terms of wages. Snow and ice drivers are in very high demand right now, so...
Yep.
That's the reason why we're asking him to move into the maximum step, especially since he's already a proven entity for us, so...
Okay.
That's the logic there.
Yep, okay. Lorraine, do you have any questions?
No.
No? All right, so if that's the case, I will entertain a motion that we, um, rehire, uh, Charles as emergency snow and ice worker at grade six, step five.
So moved.
I'll step down in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. What do we got? 6:11, all right, agenda item number 11. Uh, we're going to discuss and possibly vote to appoint Anthony Zuko as an associate member on the zoning board of appeals. Um, so is this the only position that needs to be filled right now?
On the VDA?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, Lorraine? No?
Selectman, Select Board Member Carboni, sorry. That's okay. No, I mean, it was, um, you know, the memo from the zoning board, um, requesting the appointment, and they've done their diligence, so I support the recommendation.
Okay, um, so if that's the case, I will entertain a motion to appoint, um, Anthony Zuko to the zoning board as an associate member, term to expire July 31st, 2023.
So moved.
Step down second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, let's see, agenda item number 12 is minutes, um, of November 7th, 2022. Do you have any corrections, edits?
No, I do not.
Okay, neither do I. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of November 7th, 2022.
So moved.
Step down second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What do we have? 6:13. All right, Lorraine, under new business, I will allow, as the acting Vice Chair of the meeting, a brief...
I have nothing but brief.
Okay, because as we know, this has to do with security.
It's sensitivity, right, I understand completely.
So, um, with just permission to stop you, if I feel that, you know, anyways, I'm gonna allow it.
Uh, I just wanted to update the board, um, yesterday, there were a group of, um, administration personnel, um, and law enforcement from Lakeville. We toured our school buildings, um, to review current, um, you know, protocols with, with the, with regards to the buildings itself, and there'll be some further, uh, information, detailed information coming through the town administrator through, you know, to us, um, as that, you know, unfolds. So it, the situation is taken very seriously, um, and every measure available to us will be implemented.
Okay, um, I, I think the point you're trying to make is that also, correct me if I'm wrong, is that all officials have been notified and are being kept in the loop on this, not just the school officials, but all officials in Lakeville and Freetown, uh, including town administrators, um, have all been kept in the loop on what's going on.
That is correct, and, and...
Um, Chair?
Yep.
Um, to that point, um, I sent the board, forwarded a board an email over the weekend, received from the school district regarding the convening of a safety committee. Um, Chief Perkins and I have already been invited, but, um, so there is room for a board member, the select board chooses. Um, I, I, what, what possibility could be if you, if you all wanted to, you know, volunteer or select somebody for, uh, tonight, we could formalize the appointment at the next meeting. That way we can make sure that if, if the committee meets, we have someone on board.
Okay, um...
Or not, maybe just...
Yeah, no, I, I was thinking about it when your email came in, Ari, you know, um, and I think that's allowable. That's my judgment, that that decision would be allowable under new business, and that would be something that we would ratify. Also, because of the urgency to the matter, I'm going to allow it, so. I don't know if you, you want to make a motion, I'll entertain a motion. I don't know if you wanna do it, Lorraine?
No, I'm happy to, I'm actually the school liaison, um, and having, you know, worked with the school committee for so many years, I'm happy to, you know, to step in and...
Okay, so I will step down, make a motion that Lorraine be appointed to that committee? What is that committee called again, Ari? I'm sorry?
Uh, they're calling it a safety committee.
And appoint Lorraine to that safety committee.
And I'll, I guess I'll second myself.
You can second that, yep. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other new business?
I do not have any.
Okay, any old business? Oops, now we're late. Sorry, are we done with old business? Yes. All right. Hearing, I'm sorry, here we go. So we've already read it into the record. Um, I will entertain a motion to open the hearing, um, on the application of Red Hand Brewing Company, Inc., doing business as Red Hand Brewing for a general on-premises license to sell all alcoholic beverages at 348 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass.
So moved.
Step down in second, um... What do we do with this, Tracy? Oh, all those in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Um, I, I never know what to do with the swearing in thing. So any speakers need to go through, um, the chair before speaking? I don't know if there is any butters here. Um, so if you are, I don't know, my glasses on, so if you are in a butter and you wanna speak, please let me know, um, so that...
Vice Chair?
Yep.
You wanna ask anyone that's gonna speak to stand up and raise their right hand and swear to tell truth the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Do I have to do that?
You can, yeah.
Can't you do that?
I can. I can. Anyone that'd like to speak on this application, if you could stand, please, and raise your right hand?
Right now?
Yep. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
And your name, please?
Rob Pellegrini.
How do you spell that?
P E L L E G R I N I.
And you are with?
Uh, PK Boston Law, the attorney for the applicant.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so all comments need to go through the chair. No calling out, please. And I will now ask the applicant and/or the attorney to speak to the application.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Rob Pellegrini, Law Office in Bridgewater. Real quick, this is a Section twelve All Alcohol Pouring License. It's for a proposed brewery at three forty eight Bedford, which is in Lakeside Landing. It's proposed on the old, former, I think it was in Eastern Bank.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. And really, basically, the applicant is Red Hand Brewing Company, Inc. It's made up of all residents, which is nice and easy for me. Sean Donnelly is the majority owner. He's right here with me tonight. And the minority owner is Mother Karen, also of Lakeville. And the proposed manager of the license is Brian, the brother. He's also a Lakeville resident and a brewer. Basic information about this property, it's twenty five hundred square feet. There's three means of egress. Thirteen bar seats are proposed, thirty two table seats are proposed. There's twenty outdoor seats that would be, of course, seasonal. Those are all shown on the plans provided. I can get more into those as much as you'd like. Hours of operation, Wednesday and Thursday, eleven in the morning to ten P M. Friday, Saturday, eleven in the morning to eleven P M. Sunday, eleven A M to nine P M. He'd be brewing, obviously, the the facility wouldn't be open when he's brewing, but that's Mondays and Tuesdays, eight to five. I can walk you through the floor plan if you'd like. I think you're, the key for you, you all, is that everything's gonna be safe for the public, so I can sort of walk you through what I think you'd probably want to know a lot about. Part of the application shows a floor plan sort of far back down in the, in the package. I can wait for you to get to it, or try to show you on my little eight and a half by eleven piece of paper.
Well, I have an indoor floor plan right here.
Perfect, okay. So as you can imagine, knowing this location, there's tons of parking. It's been used for quite some time. One advantage for us here is our hours of operation don't line up with everybody else in there, so it's basically gonna be an empty parking lot, just the way it is now. So there's, there's one hundred and thirteen parking spaces, so way more than would ever be allowed in here at once. The front door is lit, and as you can see, it's sort of shown on the bottom of the plan, of the floor plan. It's really designed to be a very small brewery. The brewing occurs sort of towards the top of the plan, sort of in the rear. That's all closed to the public. There's a way on the left side, there's a locked area called Dry Storage that would be for everything that you'd want to be locked up, which would be alcohol. There's a walk-in cooler sort of just to the right of that. And then sort of in the center, you can see where the bar is located with the thirteen stools. As you continue to the right, that's where the seating is. If you continue all the way to the right, that's a door, which would be sort of letting you out to the area that would be outdoor seating, which again, seasonal, and once again, would just be twenty seats. Where, you know, we're working with Board of Health, CONCOM, Planning Board, and all that, so I won't really get into the exterior too much, because I'm sure you don't want me to. So the, once again, the manager or the proposed manager is a brewer. He has a lot of experience. You can see that on the application. The money that's being used here for the project has all been homegrown, which I think is important to you as well. They've been sort of operating, doing consulting work, which means they've been teaching people how to brew beer and doing trade shows and things like that. That's where most of this money's come from, otherwise it's all privately funded by the family. I can't think of anything else you'd want to know, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Lorraine, I'll let you go first with any questions. Hold on. Okay, we can ask questions before I close the hearing, right? Okay. Do you have any questions or comments or?
I've had the liberty of watching the meeting where you had met with the Board of Health and, you know, listened to, you know, their concerns and so. So where are you in the process? I know you just mentioned that you're with CONCOM, Board of Health, and Planning Board. Where are you in the process?
Okay, Planning Board, I think, actually, that's being all handled by Bob Mather as local counsel, but my understanding is CONCOM is up and coming. It's tonight at seven, right after this. And then, let's see, Board of Health is?
Approved.
Approved. Conservation is filed.
Yep.
Anything else?
Planning Board was supposed to be last month, but they didn't file the public notice in time. So now it's December eighth.
Okay.
But we did meet with them informally and?
Okay.
Yeah, so far, the questions have been surrounding, like, water usage and things like that. It's, it's all, it's pretty insignificant with a small brewery like this. So I don't expect really any issues. If anything, I've been really surprised by the amount of positive feedback because of the location and the fact that it's kind of a nice destination for us locally.
So I guess I just had a technical question. So if we were to approve this application this evening and before they had prior, do we make it subject to their approval? Is that?
Yes, you can.
We can, okay, okay.
All right, well, that's good to know.
Yep, so I have, so we're the select board, we're not the Board of Health, we're not the Planning Board, we're not Conservation Commission. I try not to micromanage what they do. But I do just want to mention, as long as we have you folks here, and I know Mr. LaCamera, who's not with us right now, and I had concerns as well, too, with any overflow parking that may go onto the town's property. So I just want to reiterate that that's a concern for us, that we, you know, should you have a big event, and again, I'm not trying to squash anyone's events or whatever, but, you know, the town always has to be concerned with liability. So, you know, that's one of the concerns that I have. My other question is, and, you know, pardon me if I missed it, but the outdoor seating, does that take away from the parking spaces?
Not in the number that I gave you.
Okay.
The outdoor seating was shown also. It's very difficult for you to see, though.
Yeah, we had seen it on better, on a better blow up last meeting, so.
So, yeah, there were a handful of spaces in there, but that's not in the number that I provided to you. Worth noting that the fire code max capacity for, for this building would be, I think, sixty five, but clearly, they're not allowing for that. So that would be the most you'd have, which is about half of the available parking. Of course, you must, you know, keep in mind that the Planning Board in particular with site plan review is gonna be all over that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, I just, you know, want to let you know that that's maybe their concern, but that's also our concern, because we're the ones that have to make sure the town's insured and deal with lawsuits and everything else, so.
I can tell you without any question that we do not want overflow parking at the town hall. It wouldn't be a good move, so that's, I can guarantee you, actually, which I don't do a lot as an attorney.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Does, is there anyone else here to speak on this? This hearing? Does anyone else?
Any questions?
Yep, sorry, Ari.
That's all right, no problem at all. One quick question here. Just building on the town hall question, I, I think the board member's concern regarding overflow parking is legitimate and sincere, and I know you guys are committed to not allowing parking there. Are there, is there a willingness to look into things like physical barriers, fences, something like that, to keep people from walking back and forth, or what are you talking about when you say you gotta make sure that the parking doesn't happen?
That's actually a really good question. I can talk to the landlord about that. Obviously, the applicant here is just renting the twenty five hundred square foot building, but so far, he's also been very excited about the, the opportunity, so, and he's been very accommodating, so. If they were gonna have anything, any type of an event outdoors, I'd imagine they'd have to come to you anyway. That could definitely be part of any sort of application to do an outdoor event.
I would just, I would just respectfully suggest something like, even like a, you know, some type of fencing or something, some kind of, you know, to say fencing, where it might be a good, a good message to, to the patrons.
Absolutely. I, I'm hesitant to say anything before the Planning Board meeting, but I can talk to Mr. Mather before that meeting and see if he can sort of address it with them.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and, you know, that's, I think, a concern of all three selectmen. And, you know, I'm not speaking for Mr. LaCamera. When he was here at the last meeting, that was one of his primary concerns. And I know I've spoken to a couple of folks on the other boards. You know, I know we have wetlands out there, so I know there's gonna be an outdoor, you know, bathroom in the summer, but that's their, you know, that's not for me to, that's, you know, we have to hope that they understand all that, and they do. All right, yep.
Attorney Pellegrini, is your client planning on outdoor entertainment?
Yes, there is. I can show you where that would be.
Because there is some licensing that needs to offer outdoor entertainment. If it's going to be on Sundays, they need to apply for a public entertainment on Sunday's license with the board, as well as outdoor entertainment license from Mondays to Saturdays. So just to make you aware that that's something else you would need to put in place.
Okay, it's not a big part of their operation that would happen every day, so thank you for that. They would certainly do that, and I would add that that's a perfect opportunity to bring up the parking issue again. If they did apply for that, we'd make sure that they incorporate some sort of a barrier, even if it's temporary for, for these outdoor events. You know, I'm guessing that the town wouldn't want something permanent, but whenever there was an application for an outdoor event, I can see, see the need for that, and that makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
Manager?
Yep.
My attorney, another question.
Yep.
So you're gonna want to include the outdoor seating area on the, as, on the liquor license as well?
Yes, and it is shown on there. The seats are shown in the panel called Outdoor Seating. They're just really gonna be picnic tables for a total of twenty people, so. It's sort of more of an add-on than a regular thing. We just thought, you know, with the lake being right across the street, it would be a nice thing for up to twenty people to sort of enjoy. I'm sure if they were gonna do anything beyond that, they would need the outdoor license. And, yeah, as part of the application, we're well aware that they have to show barriers around that. There's not gonna be any outdoor service of alcohol. It would just be brought out. So that just makes it a lot easier for the A B C C application, and the entire area is gonna be enclosed. Not sure if we included that with it.
Yeah, they were hard to see.
Yeah, okay, so the barriers, I mean, Brian can probably speak to it more eloquently than I can, but basically, they drove around, I drove around for eight, nine months, looking at what everybody else is doing. There's gonna be a garden beds, which are very attractive, where they're gonna grow hops. And, you know, that's, I checked with the A B C C, that's, they applauded that idea, because especially with this location, we wanted to make it attractive. And then beyond that, there's, wherever that isn't included, there's gonna be sort of a very unassuming chain that is gonna be between them. You can sort, now that I'm sort of walking you through it, you can probably see that on the outdoor fencing area. We just thought, again, we were trying to be very, very cognizant of where this is located, and we really didn't want anything, you know, obtuse. And this accomplishes what the A B C C needs, in addition to the fact that there is nowhere to get alcohol outside. You'd have to walk inside and order it from, from the bar.
Okay.
Manager?
Yep.
One more question.
Yep.
Do you have square footage of the outdoor area, because you don't need to come back for an additional license for that? If we include that on your license, then you're all set for the outdoor area?
I think it might have been shown on the site plan, but I don't know it off the top of my head, unfortunately. Is it something that I could get to you?
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, I just need that to submit with the license authority certification, so.
Okay.
If you could have that in.
I'm sure I saw it on the site plan. I just don't have it with me.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, actually, Tracy. I, I'm getting the feeling they're gonna want to condition this upon the other approvals. Can you submit it to the A B C C? Because that's a lengthy process.
I can.
Beforehand, okay.
Yes, I can submit the form to the A B C C with the package.
Okay, wonderful.
Ari, anything else? No?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Lorraine, anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Yes, please state your name.
Joseph Chamberlain, water source. There's a water supply there. There's a water supply there, yes.
Yeah, there's a?
Yeah.
Downwater. They permit for withdrawal or anything like that.
Ari, do you want to help us, please?
I, I can.
Okay.
There's a one-inch main going into the building now, which is more than adequate. They're not a heavy brewer, so their total gallon usage for per batch, including cleaning and everything else, is two hundred and forty gallons, so.
Okay.
It's, it's.
Within the allocation, I'm sure.
Yeah, which is already within the existing allocation that goes to the plaza and to the separate building.
Yes.
It's not a new water connection? Okay, all right, thank you.
I was just wondering about water use, because I see there are plans to put in outdoor toilets.
Okay, the, that's a great question.
The inside is not meant for very much heavy use of toilets, right?
There's a, yeah. There's two bathrooms inside, so the one outside is gonna be portable, so there's not gonna be any connection to the sewer.
So those don't get connected to, they get connected to the water, though, right?
Uh. Wonderful, yes, there'll be running water, but it'll be self-contained.
So no connection to the sewer, which is actually the Board of Health Department anyways.
Correct.
Yep. Does that? Mr. Scott?
What was the resolution of Ari's question about a physical barrier, like a fence or something? I, I, I heard the attorney say something, but I'm not sure that I caught the entire thought.
Um, so we are going to hear what the Planning Board, I believe it was, we're gonna hear what the Planning Board has to say about that. I think the Planning Board knows our concerns with, um, not having parking there. But I don't know that we can make a liquor license subject to, um, fencing anyways. I don't think that's allowable.
The, the reason I asked the question is, I think physical barrier makes sense, but in the absence of a physical barrier, um, there's indemnification, liability, insurance, hold harmless, there's a whole lot of legal questions that would fall into the final resolution of that. And while we wanna encourage it, it seems like it's so obvious, something that should be addressed as part of this entire review process. It sounds to me like what the Select Board is saying is, you would like to know what the, uh,
Right.
outcome of that process is, because it makes sense, and, um.
Right.
I, I think you're on the right track, I just don't know how you get it resolved.
I honestly, um, don't think, I'm speaking for myself, and this is just my opinion. So I honestly don't think that we can allow the parking. I think we would have to just start towing right away, and I think that would be detrimental to the business overall. So I would, I would further think that they will either put up signage or, you know, um, so, you know.
Senator, the first step would be, um, putting up signage.
Right.
Signage that says, yeah, that, that it's not, you know, for town parking only, municipal business only, something like that.
Yep.
Certainly get that done pretty easily. Sure that the, um, the, the developer would be, you know, the, the applicant might be willing to help out with that, too. Um, you know, I, I still, I, I don't wanna belabor the point, but I still personally like the idea of some kind of split rail fence or something, uh, on those lines, just to provide a visual indicator. But that wouldn't preclude putting up some kind of signage, too.
Yep. I understand that, you know, it's very difficult for you to speak because the landlord isn't here, you haven't had this conversation with them, but, um, I think we need to really make that obvious, that.
I, I'm gonna do that. They've been wonderful to work with. I don't think they're gonna mind. I like the idea of a split rail fence. I just wasn't sure what the town administrator had in mind, and I was afraid it wasn't gonna. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And I think a little white sign or something on, on there
Yep.
would be, would do the trick.
Um, I'm gonna allow Mark Knox to speak next, who is our Planning Board Chair.
Um, so, again, Mark Knox from the Planning Board. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the Planning Board, as much as I'm just hearing the conversation that's going on. And I just don't want it to evolve into something that I, I think is well-intentioned, but maybe on the wrong path. A split rail fence is not gonna stop somebody from stepping over or walking around it.
Right.
Um, you know.
I think signage is gonna be
I agree. I don't think a split rail fence is gonna absolve any liability to the town. I, I just think the signage would be the way to go. Just have, uh, a couple of signs put along that side of the town hall parking lot by either the property owner or the applicant, just to say municipal parking only.
Yep.
That's great.
I, I think that's a simpler solution. I, I would, uh, that was, and again, not to drag this out, but one of our biggest concerns was the volume of parking at the peak times of usage of the plaza and them. That was all stuff that Attorney Mather was gonna bring back to us in the December 8th meeting. Uh, it was brought up about the town hall parking and the concerns. So we're, we're working in that direction, and I think that that's all, you know, it, it'll be covered, and I'm sure that they'll come back with a great plan.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, is there anyone else here to speak on this hearing? That wants to be heard at this hearing? Okay, all right, thank you to everybody. So, um, uh, Lorraine, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Step down second. Any discussion on closing the hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, um, Selectman Carboni and I will have a chat. So, um, I do know that, um, there's a lot of folks publicly who are looking forward to having a place.
Sure.
So, um, we all know that, you know, Lakeville's not the booming entertainment capital of the world, so. Not yet. Um, but I do think that, um, we've stressed about the parking, and I really don't want us to be, you know, back in three months after the opening or, you know, after everything's said and done, dealing with a parking problem. So I, I, I think we're really, um, putting out a lot of trust there that, you know, um. But anyways, so I, um, I would like to see it contingent, but you can speak on that as long as Tracy can still submit it that way, because I also don't wanna hold up the process, 'cause I do know it's a long process for you, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
No, I think that, um, you know, everything I see here, you know, is in order. Um, I'd be very excited about having this type of business here, and the fact that, um, the applicants are Lakeville residents, I think, you know, speaks volumes, too, that we have, you know, part of our master plan is having more, you know, small, um, local businesses, um, in town. So I applaud, um, you know, them coming forward with something like this. And, you know, I mean, my, I mean, I believe in, you know, the other boards, um, you know, will do their due diligence, too. So it's, it's, I wouldn't wanna hold up the, the liquor license for anything that the other boards may, you know, may or may not have. But I think that in the process, if something does come out, it would come, obviously, come back to this board, so.
All right, so if that is the case, then, um, and I need my helper, um, I will entertain a motion to approve, approve a new general on-premises all alcoholic beverages license for 348 Bedford Street Red Hand Brewing Company Incorporated, including the square footage?
We don't have the total square footage, but I would say that you would wanna include, um, the, um, 2,501 square feet of interior area, as well as the proposed outdoor seating area.
All right, as shown on the plan?
Mm-hmm. As shown on, yeah, submitted plans.
Okay.
And then you also need to put the hours in as well.
Okay. So, uh, I will start all over again. I will entertain a motion to approve a new general on-premises all alcoholic beverages license for 348 Bedford Street Red Hand Brewing Company Incorporated for the plan as shown. Uh, for hours of operation to be.
Would you like, that's gonna be, so it'll be Wednesday and Thursday from 11:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Wednesday and Thursday, 11:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Friday and Saturday from 11:00 to 11:00, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay. And subject to approval by all the other relevant boards.
I think you need to be specific.
Subject to approval by Planning Board, Board of Health, Conservation Commission. All right, I'll second. Okay. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so. That's very good, right?
Um, so, thank you.
Looking forward to having you as a business partner.
I'm not leaving, Mar.
Okay.
So, um, if you guys could come in on Monday and sign the certificate.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we'll get that signed Monday and, um, with the holiday. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could just get me that square footage.
Thank you. Um, all right.
Good evening.
Thank you very much. All right, so I have no other business, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, so moved.
I will step down second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Fabian, aye.
Carboni, aye.